Okay, good evening, everyone. Before we begin, I'm Renee Love here, the moderator. What a difference a year makes. Last year, in my remarks, in the midst of a pandemic and widespread civil unrest plaguing our nation, I mentioned that democracy must, that democracy will prevail, before we embarked on that quintessential New England contribution to government at the annual town meeting. Today, the pandemic and the restrictions that came with it are retreating. We in Hubbardston continue to take pride in our public safety personnel, who serve as police officers, firefighters, and EMTs, several of whom are here with us this evening. Thank you for your service above self. At this place. At this time, the 2021 Town Meeting is called to order. The Chair recognizes Chief Hayes of the Hubbardston Fire Department. Chief, please step forward. Chief Hayes will be leading us in a moment in the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point, please stand. Gentlemen, except for public safety personnel who are covered and veterans who are covered, please remove your hats. These two groups, however, will render the hand salute throughout the pledge. Chief Hayes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Please be seated. The Chair declares a quorum present, with ninety-four residents having been checked in. The checkers this evening, if there is a need for a counted vote, will be Maria Terigni and Thomas Robinson. We ask that you please turn your cellphones off, or at least on vibrate, and that you do use the microphone if you wish to address Town Meeting. When you do, three very quick steps. Please address the moderator, state your name, and state your address, and then it's your moment of fame to be captured on videotape and broadcast on YouTube. Okay, at this point, the Chair will recognize the Chairman of the Select Board, Dan Galante, to deliver the State of the Town Report. Mr. Galante.
Thank you, Renee. This is going to be brief. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for taking the time to come out here to Hubbardston's annual Town Meeting. My name is Dan Galante. I'm the Chair of the Hubbardston Select Board, and as we typically do, I wanted to give just a brief State of the Town update to set the groundwork for the meeting tonight. I'd first like to recognize a couple people. First, our Town Administrator, not here, Ryan McLean, who many of you know has been recently deployed with an eventual overseas assignment with the Army National Guard. Ryan will be overseas, doing his huge part in defending our country for an extended period of time, leaving his young family, friends, coworkers, and everyone else to take care of all his stuff and his responsibilities for him when he's gone. And I'm just kidding, Ryan, as I know he will be watching this at some point. Please note that we all thank you and wish you a swift and safe return. He's going to be watching, so. David Nixon has stepped in as our acting Town Administrator, and has been doing a fantastic job in keeping the town running and prepared for this very busy budget and Town Meeting season. David has many years' experience in assisting and running small rural towns like ours, so we're in good hands. Second, I'd like to thank our outgoing Select Board member, Pat Gerard, for his years of service to the town and to the board. He's not here tonight. Pat's a lifelong Hubbardston resident, as many of you know, which can make this position quite difficult at times, but we want to thank Pat for his time on the board and everything else he's done. Thank you. Okay, so we've been busy as a town in this last pandemic-ridden year, but I'm choosing not to focus on the pandemic tonight as we begin to move on. As you know, the state DOT has reconstructed Route 68 south from Elm Street to the Rutland Town Line and the northern portion of Route 68 from the Rec Field to the Gardner City Line. We paid for the engineering as a town, you paid for the engineering at Annual Town Meeting, and they paid the rest, about six and a half million dollars. In parallel to these two projects, the Town Center Committee, which was organized in October of 2015 at the recommendation of the Select Board, has engaged many passionate discussions in how we can approve the central portion of the town, which will sustain Hubbardston's rural identity while significantly improving the safety and making the Town Center more inviting. For almost six years now, the TCC members have shown remarkable energy towards keeping the possibility of this project a reality, and, at 100% design, it has been completed, and the DOT-approved project will be constructed in the spring of 2022. Again, the town paid for the engineering, and once again, the state DOT will pay for another $5 million to complete the full reconstruction of Hubbardston's Route 68 trunk corridor, a generalational project for all. And that's why we have these Town Meetings, to be able to plan ahead and get the okay from the town to do these things that pay 20 and 30 times over for our contributions when we can. And then finally, the budget. As usual, the Town Administrator and Finance Committee have gone through numerous iterations over the last several months, with variables like changing school assessments and union negotiations happening at the same time. We believe the balanced budget presented tonight is level and fair, with an eye towards savings, while still prioritizing some important projects and services to maintain minimum levels of service to move the town forward. Regarding long-range budgets and planning, we expect to complete a full review of financial goals and policies within five years, projections for the operating and capitalable budgets prior to the fiscal year 23 budget work. This will allow for public-facing documents and balance fiscal conservatism with residential services. Thank you and enjoy the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Galante. At this point, we are going to, excuse me, Mr. Nixon, did you want to offer any comments at this point? Outstanding. Thank you. So at this point, we're going to start off the warrant, and like we had done last year, so the first time this was done was last year, there's going to be a motion to use the consent agenda format. Let me just explain that the consent agenda, again, as was used during the 2020 Town Meeting, it has to be unanimous, it has to be a unanimous vote, that we go ahead with the consent agenda, and then the second part of it, the second part of the motion, is going to be to actually approve the articles. There is one change, and the change is going to be Article VII, so Article VII will not be considered part of the consent agenda. It has just been pointed out to us that there is the need for an amendment as far as Article VII, so that is going to be taken up right after the consent agenda. So again, Article I, to choose all necessary officers; Article II, to hear reports of Town Officers and Committees; Article III, authorize Select Board to enter into agreements with Mass DOT for the construction and maintenance of public highways; Article IV, see if the town will vote to accept educational grants and aid for fiscal year 2022, to be expended for authorized purposes by Monty Tech and Quabin, or to take any relative action thereto; Article V, see if the town will vote to authorize the continuation of Holden Hospital account, account number 2481-000-57800000, for fiscal year 2022; Article VI, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town's General Bylaw, Chapter IV, Section VI, entitled Departmental Revolving Funds by deleting language as set forth below, and transfer any and all funds in the Wiring Fund Account (revolving fund) to the General Fund, or take any other action relative thereto. So that's what the vote is going to be on, the first one. It has to be unanimous as far as using the consent agenda mechanism, and then the second vote will be an actual vote to approve. At this point, Mr. Galante moves that the town take up Articles 1 through 6 under a consent agenda. This requires a unanimous vote of Town Meeting, and if passed, then we will vote on Articles 1 through 6 as a block under a single vote. If anyone objects to a single article being included in the consent agenda, we will remove that article from the consent agenda and vote the remaining articles under the consent agenda. All, and we're going to use the cards as we usually do, all in favor, please signify by raising your card. I'm sorry, yes. Thank you. We do need a second, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there anyone opposed? Is there anyone opposed? The Chair sees none, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Galante moves that the town approve Articles 1 through 6 as printed in the warrant, and further authorize the department heads to address Town Meeting for information purposes. Mr. Galante moves, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the motion? The Chair sees none. All in favor, please raise your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Article VII. Article VII, to see if the town will vote to fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year 2022, beginning on July 1, 2021, for the revolving funds established pursuant to Chapter IV of the Hubbardston General Bylaws for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, or officers as follows, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, or to take any other action relative thereto. The Chair is going to rule that it will be cleaner, for the sake of the record, if there will be two votes, and the first vote is going to be to move Article VII as printed, and then the second motion will be to amend the Temporary Driveway Permit Fund, and so that is a numeric change as far as that particular account. At this point, Mr. Williams moves passage of Article VII as presented, seconded by Mr. Galante. Under discussion, Mr. Williams moves to amend the Temporary Driveway Permit Fund line item by adding $10,000, so it will read $12,500. And that is also seconded by Mr. Galante. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your cards. And the amendment passes unanimously. Now on the motion as amended. Any discussion on the motion as amended? This is Article VII. Chair hears none. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your cards. And Article VII passes unanimously, as amended. Thank you very much. Article VIII. Excuse me, for one moment. Article VIII, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxation, transfer from available funds, or otherwise provide the following sums of money to meet the salaries and compensation of Town Employees and Town Officers, as provided by Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, expenses and outlays of the Town Departments and other sundry and miscellaneous but regular expenditures necessary for the operation of the town for fiscal year 2022, and that starts July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, as printed in the attached Appendix A, and further to accept and expand federal and state funds to offset certain salaries or expenses and outlay, or take any other action relative thereto. And, do you want me to go line item by line item, or just do the total? Total. So the total general fund and operating budget of $4,57,106. This has been submitted and recommended by the Select Board. The Finance Committee also recommends it, and this is moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the article? Any discussion on the article? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Thank you. And Article IX. Article IX, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $486,410 for the Monticic Regional Vocational Technical School District Assessment for fiscal year 2022, or take any other action relative thereto. And this is Article IX, moved by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Galante. I, okay. So Mr. Williams moves that the town raise and appropriate $486,410 for the Monticic Regional Vocational Technical School District Assessment for fiscal year 2022. Counselor, all set? Okay. Any discussion? All, I'm sorry, Mr. Allseth? All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article X, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $5,49,651 to pay its share of the Quabin Regional School District's budget for fiscal year 2022, or take any action relative thereto. And this is going to be moved by Mr. Galante. I shall, I shall. I just want to get the mover and the seconder first, okay? Nope, that's okay, Counselor. Here we go. Moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams. I move that the town raise and appropriate $5,49,651 to pay its share of the Quabin Regional School District budget for fiscal year 2022. It has been moved and seconded, and discussion. Sir.
Hi, Warren Ruston, Rollingwood's Road. Why is Article 10 and 11 both paying money to the Quabin School District and not combined? Why are they two separate items?
Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. Article 10 is an operational budget. Article 11 is a debt service budget. Okay. What is last year's total budget to Quabin? Last year's total budget to Quabin? The operational budget was $4,879,833, and the debt exclusion, or the debt for that Quabin was $29,846, so the combination of those two numbers.
So Article 10 basically went up about 2%?
A little bit more than that. Article 10 went up by 3.4%.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card, and the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 11. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $29,093 to pay its share of the Quabin Regional School debt for fiscal year 2022, or take any action relative thereto. And Article 11 is going to be Mr. Perrigo. Mr. Perrigo moves, seconded by Mr. Williams, that the town raise and appropriate $29,093 to pay its share of the Quabin Regional School debt for fiscal year 2022. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there is one, two opposed. Thank you. Three. Okay. Can I say the opposed again, please? So, one, two, three. Thank you very much. Okay, just want to make sure everyone is counted. Thank you. And the article passes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the salaries, benefits, committee stipends, and other operating expenses of the Hubbardston Cable Advisory Committee for fiscal year 2022, and to meet said appropriation, that the sum of $20,000 be transferred from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, or take any other action relative thereto. And this is going to be Ms. Young, so moved by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Williams. I move that the fund, that the town transfer from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund $20,000 for the salaries, benefits, committee stipends, and other operating expenses of the Hubbardston Cable Advisory Committee for fiscal year 2022. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 13. So Article 13, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $182,000 from free cash to pay for the following fiscal year 2022 cash capital expenses, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and further to appropriate and transfer $11,000 from the Holden Hospital account to pay for expenses listed in Item 5 in the following table, or to take any other action relative thereto. And Mr. Gal, this has been submitted and recommended by the Select Board, Capital Improvement Planning Committee recommends, and Finance Committee recommends. Moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams. I move that the town transfer $182,000 from free cash and $11,000 from the Holden Hospital account to pay for the fiscal year 2022 capital expenses, including all costs incidental and related thereto, as delineated in Article 13 of the warrant of the annual Town Meeting held on June 1, 2021, and incorporated by reference therein. Okay. And is there any discussion? Sir.
Hello, Christopher Monroe, Grimes Road. I have a question about Item 1 that's listed in the table. It lists $1,500 to fund the replacement of the septic system. It also appears the numbers don't match between the table and the warrant, so I was looking for some clarification on that.
Thank you. Mr. Nixon?
So the first item, number one, is to fund a design for the septic system for the DPW, not actually the septic system.
Any further discussion? Chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And there is one negative, one opposed. Thank you. And the article passes. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from free cash, or otherwise provide $8,115 to pay for a portion of capital costs associated with two trucks for animal control as per the provisions of an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Gardner, or take any action relative thereto. And this is going to be Mr. Galante. Mr. Galante moves, seconded by Mr. Williams, that the town transfer from free cash $8,115 to pay for a portion of capital costs associated with two trucks for animal control as per the provisions of an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Gardner. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from accrued Community Preservation Act Housing Reserve to fund the cost of building materials to help facilitate construction of a single-family house on Ragged Hill Road by Habitat for Humanity North Central Massachusetts, or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by Habitat for Humanity North Central Mass, the Select Board recommends, Community Preservation Committee recommends, Planning Board, as the Affordable Housing Committee recommends, and Finance Committee recommends. Okay, and this is going to be moved by Mr. Perrigo, seconded by Mr. Williams. Under discussion, under discussion. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward to the microphone. Again, address the moderator, state your name and your address, please.
Such a high microphone. Does it come down? There we go, okay. So my name is Alice Liptow. I live at 96 Mount Jefferson Road. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and I just, I did seek permission to do this. I do want to talk about the Habitat House, but also, you should have a card like this in your package, and it's, the Planning Board's doing a survey for the master plan. You go online on the Hubbardston website, and I'm asking everybody here to please take it and give us some input. It gives important direction on where you'd like to see the town go, and it's been difficult to get that information this year with all the lack of meetings, live meetings. So with respect to the Habitat House, I just want to say, the Planning Board took over the Affordable Housing Committee three years ago, and there's been no affordable housing built in Hubbardston since Hubbardston House for seniors in the 1980s, and Hubbardston presently has only 3% affordable housing. The state goal is 10% for every city and town. Statistics show that 29% of households in Hubbardston actually qualify for affordable housing based on their income, and there is a seven-year waiting list for Hubbardston House. So. So, taking a step, you know, a small step in the right direction, we partnered with Habitat for Humanity North Central Mass, um, and we, uh, worked with the Select Board to get a lot donated, which the town has owned since 1962, for that house to be located on. And we really, the twenty thousand is just, uh, some funding for, to help with building materials. Uh, Habitat pretty much raises the rest. You can see in the flyer from the CPC what the house would look like, the floor plans. Um, we, we really appreciate your vote on this tonight, and I do have, uh, here tonight, Carolyn Reed, who's the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity North Central Mass. So, anyway, so if there are questions you'd like to ask her, if she can tell you a little more.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Carolyn Reed, and I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity North Central Massachusetts. And Habitat NCM is the independent affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International, serving 30 cities and towns in North Central Mass. We're a nonprofit housing organization that builds strength, stability, and self-reliance through shelter, and our mission brings people together to build, build homes, community, and hope, and we seek a world where everyone has a decent place to live. The Habitat for Humanity NCM Home Build in Hubbardston would meet the community housing guidelines, which include contribute to the goal of achieving 10% affordable housing, promote a socio-economic environment that encourages the diversity of income, ethnicity, religion, and age, provide housing that is harmonious in design, and scale with the surrounding community, and ensure long-term affordability. The new home will have three bedrooms, two baths, be designed for accessibility, and will have solar panels. And I just wanted to state that there will be three criteria to become a Habitat homeowner with all our homes. So the homeowners will earn 60% or less of area median income, have a need for housing, and a willingness to partner because they will help to build their home.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? The chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. No, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Rosemary Southwick, Williamsville Road.
Thank you.
My question is, is, did we give the land for the, the town gave the land?
Yes.
And now we're giving them twenty thousand on top of that.
That's my understanding. Mr. Nixon? Correct? Yes, that is correct.
So what's the total, uh, cost to the town for, for the housing? What was the land worth, plus the twenty thousand?
The, um, the exchange of land is for a dollar, I believe.
I know, but what is the value of the land?
I don't have the assessed value off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I mean, we should have some figure that says, just, because it's a gift we're giving, right?
Right.
The land. So there should be a value of the gift, not a dollar.
Go ahead, from the Planning Board.
Because it's taxable property after that, so what are they going to pay on taxes?
Okay.
You know, like a paper trace?
Sure.
That's all.
I just want to say, this was one of the five lots the town owned, um, and three of them were auctioned, and they sold for twenty-five thousand, five hundred. They weren't, they weren't perked, they weren't caught, they were, and they had to follow the auctions. So our feeling was, when you think about gifts from the town, I think it's important to think, this town has been sitting on these parcels since 1962. So when we build a house and we turn it into, turn it over to the housing market, that homeowner gets taxed, and this brings income into the town. And I don't know they're taxed like any other value, except there is a deed restriction which keeps it an affordable house. So it's somewhat a set, less assessment. Would that be correct? Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article 16. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer twenty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars from accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve to fund the fiscal year 2022 annual debt service obligation for the roof replacement of the Hubbardston Public Library as previously approved under Article 14 of the June 2018 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto. This is Article 16. Mr. Williams moves, seconded by Mr. Galante, uh, that the town transfer twenty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars from accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve to fund the fiscal year 2022 annual debt service obligation for the roof replacement of the Hubbardston Public Library as previously approved under Article 16 of the June 2018 Annual Town Meeting. Okay, moved by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Galante. Is there any discussion? There being none. All in favor, signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 17. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the CPA Open Space Reserve Account and fifty thousand dollars from the CPA Undesignated Reserve Account for the purpose of preserving open space consisting of the 245-acre Fieldstone Farm on Lombard Road in partnership with the East Quabon Land Trust and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and further to effectuate this preservation by means of a conservation restriction in perpetuity, meeting the requirements of General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 12, and General Law, Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33, to be held by the DCR for open space and passive recreation purposes, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the town to effect the acquisition of this conservation restriction, or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the East Quabon Land Trust, Community Preservation Committee recommends, Open Space Committee recommends, Select Board recommends, Finance Committee recommends. Article 17, moved by Ms. Young, uh, that the town appropriate and transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the CPA Open Space Reserve Account and fifty thousand from the CPA Undesignated Reserve Account for the purpose of preserving open space consisting of the 245-acre Fieldstone Farm on Lombard Road in partnership with the East Quabon Land Trust and the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and further to effectuate this preservation by means of a conservation restriction in perpetuity, meeting the requirements of General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 12, General Law, Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33, to be held by DCR for open space and passive recreation purposes, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the town to effect the acquisition of this conservation restriction. And under discussion, sir. I'm sorry. I thought, um, seconded, excuse me, uh, moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams. Go right ahead, sir.
Bob Hatch, uh, 49 Root Road. I'm chair of the Town's Open Space Committee. Uh, an abbreviated version of what you just heard is Article 17 is sponsored by East Quabon Land Trust in conjunction with our Open Space Committee, with great support from the Department of Conservation and Recreation Forests, and requests the utilization of seventy-five thousand dollars of our town's CPA funds, funds set aside for purposes like this. And it goes towards the purchase, uh, the cost of six-hundred-and-seventy thousand for that Fieldstone Farm off Lombard Road in the eastern portion of town. Speaking for our committee, uh, we're extremely thankful and supportive of the efforts of East Quabon Land Trust, who has spearheaded this effort, as well as DCR, PAX, and REC, who value the preservation of this land so much that they are contributing four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars towards that acquisition. Our committee, speaking for them, is 100% behind this acquisition effort. The land will be conserved for passive recreation, hunting, fishing, wildlife, biodiversity, and our environment. Uh, one of my, uh, personal focuses, as it relates to my role on this committee, is the critical environmental aspects of our forests. Hubbardston is blessed with great natural resources, forests, fields, valleys, rivers, ponds, streams, wildlife, and more. Uh, our waters are clean enough that feed the Rare River watershed area, uh, that those waters are used for water supplies in the metropolitan areas to the east of us. Uh, a few words about, uh, specific words about environment and forests, a particular interest of myself and hopefully everyone. Forests are the salvation of our ongoing climate change. New England is losing about twenty-four thousand acres of forest a year. The rest of the country and the world are not far, but, but in that same mode. Massachusetts is losing approximately sixty-five hundred acres a year, second only to Maine. A second-related, uh, characteristic of that is that 19 of the 20 hottest years on record have been in the last 20 years. Hubbardston has the opportunity to do what other towns and cities cannot, preserve forests. Indeed, uh, on a recent walk out there, there were folks from, uh, Worcester and other metropolitan areas. We have people from the Boston area that are aware of these efforts and are supporting them financially. Uh, I could go on for quite a while on the environmental protection and how critical it is, and I'll end with just two thoughts. FDI made a quote nearly 100 years ago, "forests are the lungs of our land, purifying the air and giving fresh strength to our people." Little did he know how true those words would be today. On behalf of our committee, we ask you to help preserve Hubbardston's most valuable assets on natural resources. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ron Ruston again.
Okay. And the address?
5 Rollingwood Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
You said that the DCR will be in control of this land. Does that mean that we will get payments in lieu of taxes?
Hello, we're, uh, debating the finer points of, uh, state property. Uh, we'll, we'll receive some money on the state aid account, the cherry sheet for state-owned land. We won't receive a separate pilot agreement.
So no indication of how much that will be per year?
It depends upon how much the legislature will fund that account.
Is that adjustable year after year?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to, uh, say that I'm against this for multiple reasons, uh, such as if this land was donated and it was given to Hubbardston, that would be one thing. That would be true open space conservation. This is not. This is buying open space. We're paying seventy-five thousand plus whatever taxes we're losing in, in this instance. The DCR is not one of the well-run organizations in this state, and if any of you have, uh, history over the last few months, the DCR has tried to shut down multiple locations within the, uh, prison camps up in, uh, Rutland. So we had to fight as citizens, residents of, of this area to be able to get to use our own, our own lands. Uh, there is also insta, instances where wildlife is, uh, used as a, uh, reason to keep this. I don't know if anybody, everybody's been seeing, uh, posts on Facebook about, uh, bears wandering down people's yards and their driveways, roads, bears, cubs, bobcats. Hubbardston is, uh, valued for its wildlife. We do have a lot of wildlife here, and the fact that we have residents here does not disperse and, and illuminate the wildlife in this area. And the fact that we're trying to conserve land in here. Hubbardston is made up of 86% forest and wetlands. 5.7% is used for residential area. So if the worst case happens where this land was converted over to, um, residential, uh, plots for housing and so forth, we still would not be worse off than some of the other towns in, in the area, like, uh, the chairman was just saying. So I would like for the town to really reconsider about taking this land, perpetually taking it out of the hands of the residents for use for residential area. We just voted on Article 15, which took open space and gave it to residential where it does generate taxes, and now we're doing the opposite.
16.
Fifteen. The, the Article 15, sir. So I think that this is just the opposite of what we want. We're talking about affordable housing. The more land that you take away from the ability to, to give to your children or your grandchildren to be able to use as housing is going to only make housing costs rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
Hello, Rick Jones, 66 Root Road. Um, I think I can answer some of those, some of that gentleman's questions. The answer to the question on the, uh, pilot program funds, payment in lieu of taxes, uh, is yes, the DCR portion of the land will, uh, will be able to, uh, collect pilot funds. Uh, as Mr. Nixon said, we don't know how much yet because it varies every year. It's up to the legislature. There's a formula for that that's, uh, pretty complicated. With respect to, uh, property tax losses, um, the property was on the market for a few years without anybody being interested in, uh, in purchasing it. I guess I'd like to reframe the, uh, the question that was asked about, uh, using it for residential, and that's why can't we have both? Right now, there are currently 16 lots totaling more than 200 acres on sale in town as of yesterday. Uh, another seven lots just recently sold. So obviously there are, uh, open lots that can be used for residential development. So I, the, the fact that, uh, Fieldstone Farm is coming off the market, uh, will affect the tax base by about nine thousand dollars. Uh, that's after considering the potential for the, uh, pilot funds. There's, there's no cost to the town, and, and by the way, the seventy-five thousand dollars is not going to purchase this land. It's going to fund the conservation restriction. And the, the funds that are, uh, the funds that are being used to do that have already been set aside as CPA funds, uh, which is one of the, one of the benefits we have in this town, of having a CPA committee and being able to take advantage of the CPA Act. Um, the other thing that I would mention with respect to the financial, uh, the financial aspects of this and the benefits, financial benefits that accrue to the town in addition to the, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, a lot of you may be aware that, uh, last year, uh, open space and state-owned land, uh, paid four-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars to the town, which represented, uh, 5% of our town's total budget. So there is a financial advantage to open space in town. If you take it all together, and that was just the, uh, the state-owned land, if you take it with all the open space in town, take it all together, it represents 9.3% of the town's revenue. In, uh, some well-published studies, uh, done by Harvard Forest, the University of Massachusetts, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, it's been shown that the revenue raised is Department of Agriculture, it's been shown that the revenue raised from open space generates a budget surplus, while the cost of community services for that residential development exceeds the tax revenue raised from that development. And you'll find this is true in Hubbardston as well, if you take a look at the assessors' report, which is on the website for 2021. Other similar research shows that the presence of open space actually raises property values in the town, and that's adding to the tax base as well. And that's something that certainly makes sense when you consider the results of the recent town survey of why people want to live in Hubbardston. Conserving this land also supports the Economic Development Committee's promotion of Hubbardston as a recreation destination. It adds to the desirability of coming to Hubbardston, and if any of you were out and about on any of our open spaces in town during our last pandemic year, you'll find people from all over the, all over the region. We're here visiting, hiking, et cetera. The only other thing I'd add, I guess, is that the, not, not with respect to the financial aspects, but the, the use of the land, the ownership of the land will be retained by the DCR and the Squabon Land Trust. The conservation restriction will be on the eastern section of that land that, that is held by the Squabon Land Chest. There's no cost to the town of Hubbardston for this, maintaining this land. The maintenance and management of the land in accordance with the terms of the conservation restriction and the required forest and habitat management plan, and all the costs of that management are the responsibility of the Squabon Land Trust. The property will, and the conservation restriction will provide opportunity for enjoyment of nature and explicit recreational activities, which include hiking and hunting, which I know a lot of people in this room are interested in, fishing, bird and wildlife observation, horseback riding, skiing, and bicycling, and also educational nature study use. That was it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Young.
All right. So I've asked more questions about this topic, seeing that I keep getting asked questions, so I need to come up with answers. So for this property, we are not buying the land. We are buying nothing but conservation rights. So therefore, the property does not come out of, like the gentleman was talking about Ragged Hill, where we weren't getting any tax money, and now we're selling it. This, we never owned it, so this has always been on the books, and we still will be getting tax money, unlike Ragged Hill. Ragged Hill is put back on the books, so we will be getting tax money for this. But this will, the EDC has been working very hard to try to shift how we look at our town to not only promote it, but also to allow money to come into our town, to our small businesses, and they have shifted their focus to ecotourism, which this property will help with ecotourism. It's going to connect part of the Midstate Trail, which is highly used for not only horseback riders, but biking, hiking, and all that stuff. When people come into our town to do all these recreational things, not only do they stop at Mr. Mike's or stop at the pizza place and get gas or get something to eat or the diner, they spend money. They also see that we have a beautiful town, and God forbid, they want to move here or something to that effect. But, you know, they will spend money here, so it does help our small businesses. Not only that, but it also, where we don't have to foot the bill for this whole property, the DCR and East County Land Trust will be spending all the money for it. We're only spending a small amount. But the whole thing is, is we still have where they said, you know, the gentleman was talking about DCR and how they're, you know, kind of messing up the Rutland prison camps and that kind of stuff. If we spend the money to have some conservation rights, we have our foot in the door. Open Space will be able to put their two cents into how this land is used. That doesn't mean they have to listen to us, but it does mean we at least have a voice in this. Whereas if we don't, we have no voice, and they've already said they will sell this, these rights to somebody else. Therefore, it's put up or shut up, basically. And I hate that stance, but that's where we're at. So between ecotourism, preserving the land, and being able to have a say in how our open space is conducted in our town, I think it's kind of a no-brainer for money that we didn't have to borrow. That's my two cents, but that's a lot of the questions that a lot of people have asked me, and it cuts to the chase.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Sarah McMaster, Hale Road. I just want to say that I think this is a wonderful project, that we should really put our vote behind. I'm new in town. I've lived here for almost four years, and I'd like to echo what Ms. Young and the gentleman before me said. That's part of the reason why I live here, why I pay taxes here, is because of our rural character and because of open spaces and the recreation that's available to us. I've walked many of East Squabon Land Trust's other properties. They do a wonderful job maintaining the trails, putting up educational signage. It's a wonderful opportunity for families. We can bring our children and have a great outdoor experience. And as Ms. Young said, this property does connect with other areas for hiking and recreation that are also already maintained, so it expands what we have and makes us more attractive. And this property in particular does have some wonderful wetlands, and it gives us opportunities for really nice bird watching, wildlife. We can take our kids and our families out and take advantage of our rural character. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Susan Worth, 66 Root Road. Question, why do you live in Hubbardston? Answer, the rural character and open space. These were the top two responses of Hubbardston residents in a recent online survey. Clearly, the citizens of Hubbardston recognize and appreciate the tranquil beauty of our fields, forests, farms, lakes, and country lanes. We clearly value our rural character and open space. Conserving Fieldstone Farm gives you the opportunity to vote your values. Let's consider for a minute the word value in a financial context. Spending 75,000 for 245 acres is a pretty good deal. It represents responsible and targeted value for our CPA dollars. This project provides accessibility to the land and protects in perpetuity a large conservation corridor. These Community Preservation Act funds are accrued annually. It's saved, it's literally money in the bank. The Fieldstone Farm article perfectly aligns with Community Preservation Act guidelines and has been approved by our Community Preservation Committee. This expenditure creates no debt and does not necessitate a tax increase. Question, what can we do to preserve our town's rural character and open space? Answer, vote yes on Fieldstone Farm, Article 17. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Linda Parmenter, 91 Lombard Road. Lived here since 94. Did not come prepared to speak this evening, but I have great passion for this parcel, and I wanted to bring attention to something that hasn't been brought up tonight, and it's about connectivity. Everybody here needs to think beyond the town of Hubbardston. I'm not going to live there forever. I'm going to move on. This isn't about me or my grandkids, but this is connected to land that is already preserved here in town. But if you look at the map of Massachusetts and even New England, it's a north-south greenway, and this particular parcel is right in the middle. So it's more than just Hubbardston. So for me, it's about marking this spot for connectivity to all the land that's preserved. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Further discussion? Yes, sir.
My name is Roger Plord, 80, New Westminster. I just want to do a quick pitch for sustainable forestry. I know Hubbardston has a long history of producing local wood products. I started my career as a forester at Curtis Lumber and have worked on Henry's Grove for 30 years, and having land protected permanently is so important if we're going to continue to produce wood from our own community. I think it's important if it's done sustainably, in the same fashion that we care about local food. I think local wood products are also important. And I've, I've hiked around the woods around this property, and I just have to say it, it's just an outstandingly beautiful stretch of land down by the east branch of the Weir River. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Steve Sawyer, 91 Lombard Road. Getting on to what Linda said about the connectivity, what's happened just to the south of us in Princeton, the Old Colony, which is the other part of Fieldstone Farm, was protected by the town of Princeton, all the way up until the Hubbardston border. To the right of that is Mass Audubon. Behind, behind one of the parcels is Fitchburg Reservoir. Behind the other parcel is Weir Watershed, already DCR-controlled. They're just looking at it as a natural extension of land that's beautiful to protect. Really isn't that buildable, the parcel that is on that side. It's not great land, but it's important land. They see it as critical. The rest of the corridor is one of the few north-south corridors in this entire state. When she talked about thinking beyond Hubbardston, it does connect. It starts at Berry Falls Dam, 495, whatever the acres or square miles are, to the Pouten Trout Water, to Savage Hill, to the Old Colony section, to the Boy Scout camps that were also preserved, to the four corners of Old Colony, to DCR, what they already owned, to Henry's Grove, to these two parcels, to the reservoir, to Westminster, to Mare Meadow. It's an unbelievable corridor. And the reason we even got interested in this beginning was because we thought, how cool would that be if you could preserve this whole corridor? And when we moved in, Princeton was not protected. Neither was any of the other parcels. Mass Audubon is to our left. The Midstate Trail does come through, and wow, what a great thing to do is to connect that trail through there. And so just an overview, if you Google Earth and you look down in this valley, you look down in the valley and you see what we're talking about with the reservoir on one side, the Weir River Tributary, it is a no-brainer. If you miss out on a chance to do this right now, it's just a real shame. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Chair here is none. All in favor of Article 17, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. One, two, three, four, five. The chair counts five opposed. Thank you very much. Article 17 passes. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Revenue the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2022, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation or take any other action relative thereto. And this is Article 18, moved by Mr. Galante, signed it by Mr. Williams. Move that the town appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Revenue the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2022, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. So appropriations from fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, representing 5%, $4,250. Reserves from fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues for historic resources, 10%, $8,500. From fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues for community housing, 10%, $8,500. From fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues, open space reserve, 10%, $8,500. From fiscal year 2022, estimated revenues for undesignated reserves, 65% or $55,250. And again, this has been moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the article, on Article 18? Any discussion? Chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. The article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 19. Article 19. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $28,000 from the accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of rehabilitating the interior of the main floor of the Hubbardston Public Library, including lighting, interior storm windows, and safety signage, or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the library trustees, Community Preservation Committee recommends, select board recommends, finance committee recommends. Motion by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams, that the town transfer $28,000 from the accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of rehabilitating the interior of the main floor of the Hubbardston Public Library, including lighting, interior storm windows, and safety signage. Is there any discussion on the article? Any discussion on the article? Chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Article 20. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve for the purpose of restoring and rehabilitating the Hubbardston Public Library specifically by brick repointing, repairing and grading the northeast corner perimeter of the foundation thereof, or take any other action relative thereto. Article 20, moved by Mr. Parego, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on Article 20? Chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. One opposed, two opposed. Does the chair hear three? All, thank you very much, and the article passes. Okay. Article 21. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, the fee-to and/or permanent and/or temporary easements for public way purposes, including without limitation for the construction, installation, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation of rights of way, sidewalks, drainage, utilities, driveways, retaining ways, guardrails, slopes, grading, rounding, construction, landscaping, and other appurtenances and/or facilities to enable the town to undertake the Route 68, Main Street, Gardner Road rehabilitation project, and for any and all purposes incidental or related thereto in, on, and under certain parcels of land located on or near Main Street and Gardner Road and approximately shown on plans entitled Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division Plan and Profile of Main Street and Gardner Road, Route 68, and the town of Hubbardston, Worcester County, prepared by TEC, T E C Engineering Corporation, unfilled with the town clerk, as said plans may be amended and/or incorporated into an easement plan and land within 200 feet of said parcels. B, transfer the care, custody, and control of a portion or portions of the town-owned property or properties shown on the aforementioned plans from the board or officer having custody of the same for the purposes for which such properties are or officer having custody of the same for the purposes for which such properties are currently held to the Select Board or for public way and utility purposes, and further to dedicate said portions of the town-owned properties to the foregoing purposes, and if applicable authorize the Select Board to submit petitions to the General Court to allow the foregoing under Article ninety-seven of the Massachusetts Constitution or otherwise; c, raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or transfer from free cash fifteen thousand dollars to fund the foregoing project and any and all costs incidental or related thereto, including without limitation the cost of any land easement acquisitions, appraisals, and surveys, and further d, select the Select Board, authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements and take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purposes or take any action relative thereto. And Article twenty-one is going to be moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams. Is there any discussion of Article twenty-one? Yes, sir.
With respect to, rather than make you read the entire motion.
Thank you.
Funding source is going to be free cash, sir. If you could just clarify, the town will transfer from free cash fifteen thousand to the funding source. How do I...
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. So again, the funding source, as Town Council has just explained, is going to be free cash, and that is in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Sorry. Two-thirds, the quantum of vote for this article is going to be two-thirds. Okay? And Mr. Williams, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Galante.
Hi. Just like to say that throughout the process, we've had various Mass DOT representatives help us with different parts of this. We've had an easement liaison recently with the Mass DOT who has recommended this amount. They believe it is probably not going to be expended, but it is a safe amount to have. So this may get returned, but this is what they've recommended for similar-type projects.
Thank you, Mr. Galante. Excuse me. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor of Article twenty-one, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-two. Article twenty-two, as, let me see, to see if the town will vote to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to the general stabilization account or take any other action relative thereto. Motion by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Galante, that the town transfer fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to the general stabilization account. Is there any discussion on the article? Any discussion on the article? Chair here is none. All in favor, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your card. And the article passes unanimously. Thank you. Article twenty-three. Article twenty-three, also two-thirds. This is also going to require a quantum of vote of two-thirds. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by amending the last sentence of Article six, rate of development, section six point eight, periodic review and expiration to extend the expiration date of the bylaw for one year. To read this, bylaw shall expire July one, twenty-twenty-two, or take any action relative thereto. And this is going to be moved by Mr. Galante, seconded by Mr. Williams, and also Ms. Young. Moved that the town amend the zoning bylaws for the town, for the code of the town of Hubbardston as delineated in Article twenty-three of the annual town meeting warrant for June one, twenty-twenty-one, and incorporated by reference thereto. Under discussion, sir.
Christopher Monroe, fifty-nine Grimes Road. I wanted to take a moment and speak on this because this is an important issue for us, even though it's just the change of a couple of words. The rate of development bylaw restricts the number of new projects that can be built in the town, and a no vote or no action on this would essentially remove the cap. By having a yes vote, we'll be extending that cap out for a year. And there's some important things that are going to happen during that year time. For example, we're going to be having our new master plan. As Ms. Leibdahl had mentioned before, everybody got the cards, so we all need to respond to that. But the current cap is twenty-eight projects. Last year, I believe it was twelve that we had, so it was less than. So we've not yet bumped up against this cap, but the cap should still be maintained going forward in order to give the planning board some breathing room and some space to come up with some thoughtful plans for how we're going to manage growth in the future based upon the output of the master plan.
Thank you. And there is a requirement per Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five, that the planning board report. Sir? I'm sorry, Ms...
I'm not the planning board.
I understand. Planning board?
Yes, I serve on the planning board.
Go ahead. So your report is that the...
Did you, did we have a hearing and you voted in favor of this?
Yes, we held a public hearing and we voted in favor of this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Having met that requirement. Mr. Robinson.
I'd just like to speak to this law. The rate of development law has served this town very well since about two thousand and one, and every five years it has been re-upped, so to speak, renewed in its present state. And at the rate the master plan will be developed, and at the rate this bylaw will be reviewed, I strongly suggest that this article entertain a friendly amendment changing twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six, so that this town, so that this law is re-upped for five years as it has been for the last fifteen years. And that would give the planning board even more time to do the master plan and review of this bylaw. So if the friendly amendment is accepted...
Did you recall, but to be able to use, would the person sitting at their dining room table read this, think that they would extend it by five years? I think that's the only...
On the advice, on the advice of Town Council, the friendly amendment will not be agreed to, and will be considered beyond the scope, unfortunately. Do I have that correct, Counselor? Yes, thank you. Mr. Robinson.
Could I just ask, beyond the scope of what?
Beyond the scope of, of an individual's understanding, reading this article as Counselor indicated at their dining room table that it was not going to be extended five years, it was going to, it was going to be extended one year. Correct?
Well, I understand what it says, but I don't understand why it can't say something different. This bylaw shall expire July first, twenty-twenty-six.
Counselor.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for having me. I'm Jeffrey Blake. I'm with, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm with KP Law, your Town Council. And with respect to the so-called scope of a warrant article, a warrant article is simply a warning to everybody when they read the warrant that these are the issues that are going to come up. So there is a fair amount of discretion given to the moderator as to what's within the scope, but when you change an article so much that it wouldn't have been fair warning to people that read the warrant last week when it was first posted to be here, to be able to participate, then that is beyond the scope. And in my opinion, going from one year to five or six years, I believe that's beyond the scope, and it's clearly up to the moderator, and he agrees with me.
How about two years?
So if the, if the chair may, so Counselor, again, essentially what is printed in the warrant is very much what is contained in the warning for the, for the warrant. Okay? So, so again, we read this, we attend town meeting year after year after year, and the words might seem boilerplate, but they do serve a purpose. And in this case, the purpose is that warning that, that essentially the scope was going to be for one year. Is there a year limit, or is that, is that going to be gray?
I believe that it, that it's probably gray. I think five years is probably beyond. It's certainly your call. One year is two years, you know, that, that, again, that's your call. I've certainly seen moderators that won't go any higher. They'll let you go lower, but they won't let you go higher. But, you know, unfortunately, that's, that's your call.
Right. Okay.
Could I ask, is this just related to the friendly amendment, or could this town meeting put an amendment on the floor?
It would be treated, it would be treated, so it would be treated the same. Okay? Which is not to say that amendments cannot be made. We have seen amendments happen at virtually every town meeting. However... Okay? No, that's fine. So I was, the chair was saying that although amendments can be made, in general amendments, their, their practical effect would be to reduce, not to expand or to extend. Is that correct?
Oftentimes, in situations like this, yes.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to reemphasize the need to keep this law in place for as long as possible. If we drop it, the, if we, if we don't pass this article tonight, the gates open, the floodgates open, and the development of this town would be at an uncontrolled rate. And I find that very threatening to our, as we've talked about, open space and all the things we know and love about Hubbardston. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
My name is Franz Richsteiger, planning board, and if you, I'm six-five Hill-Bird Road. And if you would indulge me, I would like to speak with the, with the audience here. Ladies and gentlemen, as a member of the planning board, I can tell you that I very much agree with Mr. Robinson, that this is a very, very important bylaw that we need to review and review very seriously. We did not have a chance this past year with all of the work that was going on in the planning board. We had multiple sessions that took place, extending to, for several hours, and many a times did we have two meetings a month. And so as a result of that, this is something that really fell through the cracks lamentably. This is an important bylaw, as I've indicated, and so we have not done our due diligence to be able to really get the input from the town. And for some people, twenty-eight might be too, might be too high, and for some other people, twenty-eight might be too low. And I think it's very important for us to get citizens, citizenry to participate and come to the meetings that we have with the planning board. And if anything, Mr. Robinson, thank you for accentuating that, because I think it's important for folks like yourselves to come to the meetings and discuss this here, and present your thoughts and present your feelings with regards to this here, and let the planning board know what you are actually looking for. As Christopher Monroe indicated, we have a master plan that's, that's blooming very soon, and something which I think is going to be also a good contributor towards what we are going to be faced with in terms of how do we add all of this here in the general scope of how we want our town to look. We have a master plan, as I said, that's coming about. I ask you to, therefore, to support at least minimally at this point in time, this one year. And as a member of the planning board, and I do know that the other members of the planning board who are here, and even those who are not here, have seriously discussed here, this year, and have committed that by this time next year in twenty-twenty-two, this matter will be presented with a final version that hopefully represents to the town what the town ought to be looking at based on the input that we receive from everybody. Thank you very much, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Chair sees none. All in favor of Article twenty-three, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. And it does require two-thirds, and it is, two-thirds has been attained. The article passes. Thank you. Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four. And before any of you shudder, as I had a few moments ago, I not only have a bum ankle, but I would have seriously damaged vocal cords as a result of this. The beauty of all of this is going to be found on page twenty-nine of the warrant. And so Ms. Young is going to move, seconded by Mr. Williams, that the town amend the zoning bylaws of the code of the town of Hubbardston as delineated in Article twenty-four of the annual town meeting warrant for June first, twenty-twenty-one, and incorporated by reference herein. Is there any discussion? Again, motion made by Ms. Young, seconded by Mr. Williams.
I would like to speak to this.
Absolutely. Ms. Young.
So this started long ago, when I was actually on the two-fiftieth committee, and this signed bylaw thwarted our efforts a few times for fundraising. Then we moved on to, I was on the EDC, we resurrected that committee, and we started out looking at a few of the bylaws and talking to the businesses in town, and the one that kept coming up that was painful for a lot of the businesses and is very difficult to read was the signed bylaw. So Todd Miller, who was the EDC for our five towns, we got him on a grant coordinator for the five towns, started rewriting a signed bylaw draft, which his idea of rewriting a signed bylaw draft was pull something from another town, copy and paste, and give it to myself and Whitney and a few others on the committee to look at and go over and give our two cents on. At that point, we weren't really the signed bylaw people or drafting people. It gets kicked over to planning, where the signed bylaw did go, and planning, the planning board took it on and rewrote it. They actually looked at the dimensions of signs that we actually have in town, signs that are being used currently, that are either A, not on this bylaw that we have right now, B, are totally illegal on the bylaw that we have right now, or C, are in full effect to the bylaw compared to the bylaw that we have right now. So a lot of the signs, like the LEDs in the windows, those are technically not allowed. There's other signs, like the multi-tenant sign at the center of town, technically that's illegal. The GFA sign is illegal. There's a whole lot of signs in town that are technically illegal. The signed bylaw that has been rewritten beautifully, I think, it's not perfect, but nothing ever is, by the planning board, addresses most of the concerns and issues that came across to the EDC originally from the businesses in town. Now, like I said, nothing is ever perfect, but it is so far better and actually addresses all the signs that are, we actually have in town and that are proper, and it has definitions, it's easy to read, and it will actually help our businesses in town. So therefore, I would ask that this, please, I've been, I've been kicking this can down the road for like four years, working on, trying to get this to come to this...
Yes, sir.
Long before I was a Select Board. And I would actually love to see this for the businesses in town actually passed, because it makes so much more sense for the businesses, and actually would allow the signs that we have to actually be there without, they're there anyway. I don't understand why we can't make it proper. That's all I got.
Thank you. And before the, the chair entertains further discussion of Article twenty-three, at this point, excuse me, twenty-four, at this point, the, the chair is going to ask that a member of the, the planning board, please come forward and report, per Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five, that the, the board has met, has had a hearing, and has voted favorably on this.
Yeah, hi. Alison Leibdahl.
Allison Doll, 96 Mount Jefferson Road, I'm chair of the planning board. We did have a hearing, and it was, and we did vote favorably on it as a planning board. We've also, if I could speak to it.
So the report first and duly noted. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, the planning board put a lot of effort into this. It was all last year. It was supposed to be last town meeting, and then because of the COVID situation, it was an abbreviated meeting, and we didn't do it. We decided to delay the vote. But we did take on this task, revising this bylaw, at the request of the Economic Development Committee, as the selectman just said, and the town administrator, who had received multiple complaints that the existing bylaw needed to be simplified and clarified. So I know maybe looking at it, you don't think that this was an effort, but it was a great effort to get it from 14 pages to eight pages and to redo the charts. And we, we put a lot of work into it. We did reference towns. We read a lot of different bylaws. But this was created basically as a task to simplify what we have and clarify the things that were not addressed and to eliminate, again, as Ms. Young said, some of the things that were not allowed, you couldn't even do legally in the existing bylaw. So I, I don't want to spend too much time going in the, too much detail, but I will tell you, what we did is we created categories of signs, primary, canopy marquee, gateway, multi-tenant ladder signs, wall signs, LED, electronic messaging, temporary signs. And then we created charts where it specified the size limit, the illumination hours, and, you know, by zoning district, right? So you're allowed a larger sign in commercial than you are in residential. And so a lot of it was just simplifying those and making it readable. Some of the key provisions, internally lit signs, EMC signs, and street-spanning banner signs are not allowed, except by the municipality or nonprofit. If you think of our festival days, they would be allowed, but you couldn't, a private person couldn't spring, couldn't put a big sign like that up. Window signs can't obscure more than 50% of the window. Externally illuminated signs must focus on the face of the sign and not light up the sky. Signs must be turned off at night in residential districts between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and town center districts between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, and in commercial districts between 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM. These hours do not include the gateway signs, like to Madison Green, and they don't include the service station, which has to be available. Permanent signs require permit from the building inspector. Temporary signs may only be displayed for 30 days prior and 10 days following an event, and that includes political election signs and contractor real estate signs. Temporary signs placed on public property are limited to 14 days and must have contact information written on them, and the town can remove and destroy signs that are left up longer. So those are some of the, some of the provisions to give you, it's not a dramatic department, a departure from what we had. It's a, just a more sensible bylaw. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Rebecca Rector, 115 New Templeton Road. And I'd like to discuss how this bylaw affects personal property and free speech rights, especially in regards to political speech, since it doesn't only refer to things on the ballot as political. So, you know, it's not just saying that a sign is political if it includes a political candidate, but also if it expresses a political opinion. And I think that that's much too vague, and it will lead to arbitrary enforcement. I see a lot of nice signs around town on people's personal property that are supporting essential workers, supporting unions, supporting police, supporting Black Lives Matter. None of these things are on the ballot, but when you hear politicians talk about them, they sound like political speech, and I think that we should not have our property rights or free speech rights infringed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Kresge, New Templeton Road. This is a procedural question, so like I said, it's probably directed to council. The text to this bylaw is littered with incorrect internal section references. Fixing them would just be ministerial changes. Are those kind of changes allowed after the fact of town meeting vote?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Again, my name is Jeffrey Blake.
Yes, councilor.
I think, without knowing exactly what you're talking about, if there were substantive changes, you can't do that. But if there were typographical errors, you can do that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not substantive. It's, throughout, references are made to Section 7.1 such and such. This article is actually 17. It means, you know, the references should all be to Section 17, not to Section 7.
It sounds like it would be ministerial. So yes, Mr. Kresge, it would be ministerial.
And deletion of extraneous text?
No. No. No.
Okay, so...
So it would be limited to correcting typos.
Okay.
Okay.
So is there an avenue at this point to amend, to remove extraneous text or not?
I believe there would be.
Go ahead.
In the final, on the final page, it's page 14 on my copy, Section 17.13, Items B and C.
Under the heading temporary signs?
Temporary signs, yes.
Okay, additional restrictions. Please proceed.
Item B, the last phrase is you get a B, reference to B again on private property. It's really referring to the next section, C, the next item, C. But in essence, it's extraneous. It could just be deleted. And the same, same comment on item C, the last phrase under item C.
So for, A, general provisions, A, subsection B, to strike after the word signs.
Correct.
B, period, on private property.
Correct.
As far as subsection C, after the word owner, the words C, period, on public property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Kresge moves the amendment. Is there a second, duly seconded? Is there any discussion as far as the amendment? Go ahead, Mr. Galante.
Does the planning board have any problem with this?
No, I think it's a common issue. I apologize for missing it.
Okay. Let the record note that the chair of the planning board said that that panel has no opposition to the amendment proposed by Mr. Kresge. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Sir, discussion, discussion is limited to the amendment at this point.
I just want to speak to the lady who was speaking about signs. As far as, I'm pretty sure I'm corrected. You can write on a sign whatever you'd like, political or whatever.
Excuse me, sir, just for one moment. We have to take a vote on the amendment. So striking that extraneous language, no, sir, please stay right there. So again, we're going to be voting on the amendment by Mr. Kresge, duly seconded. Any, any further discussion on the, on the amendment? Chair hears none. All in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, please raise your card, and the amendment passes. Thank you, Mr. Kresge. Sir, please, please proceed. Your name and your address, please.
Peter Walker, 25 Muskogee Ave. You have a right to free speech under the Constitution, okay? And also, there is a Mass. General Law, I'm pretty sure, that covers signs on your yard that cannot be trumped by local bylaws. What I'm saying is, there is a Mass. General Law, I'm pretty sure there's a Mass. General Law that covers signage in your yard. If you wanted to say something negative about a person on a sign, you have every right to do that and put that sign in your yard.
So again, at this point, you're not going to be engaging in debate.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I was just trying to help her out.
No, absolutely, sir. So questions, again, should be directed to the, to the chair, again, through each other. So go ahead. Did you want to answer? Is there an answer that you'd like to?
I'll try, yes.
Okay.
First of all, to the lady's objection first, political signs does, are not just candidate signs for public office, but specifically in our definition is also to express a political opinion. And the only, and we don't say you can't do this, we just have a restriction in how long it can be up. And obviously, if it oversteps that bound, you know, the state law would control our timeline.
Counselor, anything?
Thank you.
Mr. Blake, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. There is not a state law with respect to signs. What it, it's, as this speaker, who's stepping up to the microphone right now, has correctly pointed out, that is the First Amendment free speech right. But free speech is not necessarily unlimited free speech. Reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, content neutral. There are cases out there that have debated back and forth about how long a political sign, one of those temporary signs that are set up beside the road, can stay up. You can, the courts have said that you can limit the amount of time. You can limit where those signs are, provided, so that there's a safety component. You can't have big signs right beside the road. You can't have lights that glare in people's eyes. So also, just so that you know, that any zoning bylaw would have to be approved by the AG. The AG will look at this bylaw, and if she finds that there are certain sections that are offensive to the law, she can strike those sections.
Further discussion? Sir?
Is this still on the amendment?
No.
Nope, not on the amendment.
Since we are, Ron Ruston, since we are replacing the, what was in the article, in the section in the bylaws to begin with, with everything here, with, everything here is brand new, does that instantly make all the illegal signs that are currently out there grandfathered?
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. In order for a sign to be protected under 48, Section 17, it must have been lawful at the time that the bylaw changed. So to answer your question, if it was illegal then, it will be illegal now. If it was conforming then, it will be what is known as a pre-existing non-conforming sign, and it will be protected.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes?
Again, Allison Doll, planning board chair. I just want to say this, while it hasn't been reviewed by the AG, it was reviewed by town council, this, because I didn't mention that earlier. And the other thing is, is yes, the grandfathered signs would be grandfathered, but when they were out and need replacing, then you would bring them into conformity.
Again, Bob Hatch, Root Road. The, does the sign bylaw address anything relative to vulgarity? I know of people that travel South Road in Templeton. There's a pretty blatant political flag there that obviously is essentially a sign. Can anybody put up any kind of words they want as part of a public display? We have a lot of young people that travel that road, that come up to our horse farm, and just personally, I find it insulting to the general public to have things like that displayed.
Counselor, First Amendment question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, Mr. Moderator. I guess vulgarity is something that would be, I don't want to say in the eyes of the beholder, but there's a, there's a fair amount of gray area there. And the First Amendment protects a lot of speech. So without seeing the sign, without looking at the bylaw, without, you know, doing a little bit more in-depth research, I, I can't tell you that, but there are some things that are vulgar. There are some things that the First Amendment doesn't protect.
Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Rosemary Southwick, Williamsville Road. My question is, if the signs that you are saying are illegal now, under the bylaw that we have right now?
The, the one before town meeting?
Not this one.
Not this one?
Right.
Okay.
Who was responsible to go and tell those people that it's illegal and take it down? Because if you're just going to change it again, and nobody's responsible to get the illegal signs down, what's a sense of changing it?
The, the chair has been advised by the town administrator that it would be the building inspector in his capacity as the zoning enforcement officer.
Correct. So can you just tell me what the line is? I mean, our building inspector is regional, so they're not in town all the time. So what's it take for a person to complain about the sign and get it removed or toss it? There's no sense of making new laws when you can't enforce the old ones.
So again, the, the chair has been advised by the acting town administrator that the, the line of communication, the, the line of complaint would be directed to his office. And then he, he would be the, the one contacting the building inspector.
So basically, nothing will change anything because we haven't done anything yet. So now, the illegal signs that we have in town, by changing this bylaw, you can't touch them because they're grandfathered. But if you keep the...
Excuse me, for clarification purposes, unless they are illegal now. If they are illegal now, then, as Attorney Blake mentioned, they would be illegal, they would not be grandfathered in. If they are illegal under the, the present bylaw.
Present, meaning the one, not this one?
Right now. Correct. Correct.
Okay.
They would not be grandfathered in.
So what's this one going to do to those signs?
So the, the process, as, as the acting town administrator explained, is very much complaint-driven. So if you know of a sign that is illegal, that would not be meeting this proposed bylaw, or for that matter, the existing bylaw, it is incumbent on you, as it would be any other resident, to contact the town administrator's office, who then would reach out and contact the, the building inspector.
But if the building inspector or the town counts, town administrator
Yes.
sees a sign that's illegal, then they should follow it through, not wait for someone else to complain about it if it's illegal?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay? Oh, you're welcome.
So, Renee?
Sir?
So by changing or adopting, voting, this new sign bylaw, it will eliminate most, I'm not going to say most, but at least a lot of what is actually illegal right now. So it will change it where we won't have all these signs that don't fit into this bylaw, because it addresses, there's a lot of things missing in this old bylaw that aren't even addressed. I don't even know if they were thought of, they weren't even in the realm of reality when it was written, that now the planning board has actually taken in account. They actually, I'm pretty sure they even went out and measured some of them to see if it actually, like, how big these signs were, to take in account the signs that we actually have, therefore rendering our, our businesses in compliance if this gets voted in. So it won't be such a big deal. And signs, therefore, further going on, people, the businesses that are putting them in, that's the size that they're going to do, because that's the size that makes sense for business. You're not going to have a stupid little tiny sign that's four by four for a big, huge, you know, like the plaza in the center of town. It's supposed to be four by four. Who the hell is going to read that? You can't even read the lettering on it, let alone have lettering that's only like 12 inches when you're driving by on 68, going 50 miles an hour, that a business had set back. It doesn't make any sense. They took in account for that kind of stuff. They took in account for that kind of stuff, so the letterings and the residential compared to the center town, compared to the commercial district, it all makes sense, and it will actually work with businesses, and they can have a sign that would work for their business and fit into the bylaw without being illegal.
Thank you very much. Further discussion?
Tom Robinson on Brigham Street. I'd like clarification on the signs that are called LED signs, which appear to be growing more popular in area. They're three feet by two feet and they're illuminated and very programmable so that they're very animated. And if I'm describing that thing, is that the LED sign that is described in this law?
Go right ahead. Planning Board Chair?
I don't have all the provisions in this memorized, I'm telling you. But there is a definition of LED signs, and they are not allowed. We have restrictions on them.
17.12.
Yeah, LED signs, they can't scroll, they can't, they can't blink, their brightness is regulated. They have limited dimensions. They have to be, the background has to be black. You've seen a lot of these signs that are, the background's colored and they're really bright. Brightness levels can't exceed the illumination of .6, .8 foot candles. The service station LED sign must be mounted on the ground, and all lettering must be of the same color. And I think with the LED signs, where they're permitted and not permitted.
On page 13.
Yes, LED. So they're not permitted in residential districts. They're, the lighting must be turned off at 10:00, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM in the town center district and 12:00 to 5:00 in the commercial district. So they're not, they're not allowed in residential districts at all. Does that help you?
When it says one, does that mean there's only one allowed in the whole town?
No, one, no, it means anybody with a property in the town center district, the limited would be one. So you could not have a bar with 10 different years of advertising.
But if you had six stores, you could have six of these kind of signs.
Yes, one per property in a commercial district.
Well, about two years ago, this came up. That particular type of sign came up to the zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board of appeals rejected this sign. I guess I don't have a big problem in the commercial district, but why are we putting them in the town district when we're spending millions of dollars making this town, the town center district look better by rehabbing Main Street, and then we're going to put up a bunch of these animated LED signs? It doesn't make any sense to me. I'd like to see that table strike Town Center District. On page 13, Town Center District, strike that whole table or make it not permitted, just like in residential. What's more residential than the town center?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Kresge?
To the point that was just being brought up on what the quantity actually means, the first sentence under 17.12 says that the regulations are regarding the quantity of LED signs that may be permitted per district. If you mean it to be per property, we probably need to change that language.
I don't think it's confusing, but we would not just allow one sign in whole district.
But that's what it says.
This is per prop, per residential property. I don't know. If you think it's confusing, I mean, we're happy to bring you back later, but we've been working on it a long time.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not going to make a case on about this.
And I guess in answer to Tom Robinson's question, so the lettering can't exceed the 16 inches, meaning the whole side of the sign, right, that's lit up? So I think there was, there was quite a bit of discussion on this, that as the town center gets developed to allow some businesses, there may be a place for small LED signs. So I mean, that is, I don't think that was an oversight. I think it was, you know, it was intended. If people feel that, you know, that's not proper, you can vote against this, you can come see the planning board, we could amend it again. But anyway.
Thank you. For the first time, anyone wanting to address this article for the first time? Mr. Robinson?
I fully appreciate all the work that went into this article, and I apologize for in these COVID times not more fully participating in the process of developing it. But I would urge the town meeting today to pass over this. So I make a motion to do that. I think it needs a lot of work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Robinson moves to pass over Article 24. Is there a second? Seconded? Is there any discussion as far as the motion to pass over? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to pass over Article 24? Please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Those opposed, oh, I'm sorry, sir, did you have your card raised? 21, 21. Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. And the motion to pass over fails. Back to Article 24, back to Article 24. Any further discussion on Article 24? Chair hears none. All in favor of Article 24, as amended by Mr. Kresge, please signify by raising your card. And the quantum is going to be 2/3. Thank you. You can lower your cards, thank you. Those opposed, those opposed, please signify by raising your card. 21, I have 21 in favor. Oh, that was on the other one, okay. We have 15 opposed. Okay, you can lower your cards. We're going to have a second count. Again, those in favor of Article 24, please raise your card. Thank you. And those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may lower your cards. The results of the vote are as follows. 52 in the affirmative, 15 in the negative, and the article passes. At this time, the warrant having been completed, the chair is going to declare the 2021 town meeting adjourned at 9:12 PM. Thank you.